All to order, the special meeting of the city council for the city of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, April 14th at exactly 3:00 PM. City Clerk, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
Present.
Councilmember Kraus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunsford.
Mayor Canning.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you very much. If you are able, please stand and join me for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the great public, with which I stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you've noted from your agenda packet, we are operating under the governor approved COVID-19 conditions for public meetings, and we'll be adhering to that protocol. With that understood, council members, because we are televised at home, if you feel comfortable, you are allowed to down your mask while you're speaking so that your voice isn't muffled. We do have, as we noted from our last meeting, under these conditions, quite a home audience. So just bear that in mind, thank you. Public comment, I'll receive, we will receive public comment on any of the consent calendar items at this time. If you have a comment on a specific agenda item that is not on the consent calendar, we will allow for that time during that period. Is there anyone wishing to address the consent calendar? All right, with that said, I will close public comment. I will entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented unless an item is asked to be pulled, and I am actually going to pull item number four.
I'll move items one, two, and three.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunsford, we have a second by Councilmember Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. On item number four, City Manager Kern, I just pulled this forward, and my apologies because I did not give you the heads up on that, just so we don't have confusion on what we had discussed in our last meeting relative to the conditions, where economic conditions we're in, and unpaid water bills. This, I believe, is addressing a previous legislative action by the state of California, and this puts us in compliance.
That is correct.
Okay, if you can just give us a very brief background, we'd appreciate it.
So this is a result of legislation that was passed last year. Technically, we should have had this adopted by April 1st, but because of the COVID crisis, we were not able to bring that forward. It basically provides that the city provide significant advanced constructive notice to any resident that is potentially subject to a water shut-off for not paying their utility bill. It requires 60 days notification prior to taking any enforcement action associated with that. We have to send them or post two times prior to reaching out to them a final time. They then have five days for final remediation. We have established a policy for return to service, which is consistent with what we had before, but it basically says it's the responsibility of the city to advance any enforcement activities prior to shutting off the water. In your resolution, the very last whereas, the recommended policy and procedure are not intended to circumvent or bypass any emergency declaration for utility shut-offs issued by the governor of the state of California related to COVID-19. So we're very clear that this is separate and apart from that, and it's an order for us to be in compliance with the previous state bill.
And for clarity's sake, during the period of COVID-19 actions, we are not initiating or taking action on any shut-off notices, correct?
No shut-off, nor are we imposing late penalties for failure to pay.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, any questions on this item? I appreciate the clarification. Anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? With that said, I will motion on item number four, and we'll entertain a second.
Second.
I have motioned, and the second goes to Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. Moving on to the regular, the regular agenda, excuse me, under general government, item number five, consideration of a resolution continuing a proclamation of a local emergency related to COVID-19 until further notice. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution. Taking us through this item this afternoon will be City Manager Kern. Mike, please.
Good evening, good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Mike Kern, I'm City Manager. This is a follow-up on the action item that your council took on March 20th. On March 16th, as a result of the Napa County Public Health Director's issuance of a local state of emergency on March 12th, I issued a proclamation of local emergency. On the 20th, your council ratified that, which you're required to do. When I make a declaration, you have to, you have to ratify it within seven days or it's void. You did so within five days, so it's still in effect. When you ratified it, you had a minimum of a 60-day extension there, too. Because you're meeting, again, we need to continually reinforce or re-ratify that declaration, so that's what this action is. The resolution mirrors, if not word for word, very closely the proclamation that was issued by the city of Yountville, and for specific purposes, we included some financial impact statements related to some of our local businesses. That gives them at least some legislative point to, if you will, that says, I'm out of business because of this declaration. They may be able to seek restitution from their insurance company, there's no guarantee, but at least there's acknowledgement that, yes, this is a significant financial impact to our local community. The resolution is fairly lengthy, it's very comprehensive, and it basically extends the declaration of emergency until further notice, or at least 60 days. So you will not have to take any further action on this unless we go beyond the 60 days, or there is a need to terminate the declaration. So with that, I'm here for any questions. I do have a PowerPoint that I'd like to go over. If you guys have any questions, we could do that first, or I could jump right into that. What I'd really like to do is document and demonstrate to the community some of the level of effort that myself, the mayor, and city staff have undertaken in response to COVID-19. It's been a while since we've reached out to the community, and I felt that this would be an opportunity to do that.
Okay, unless council feels otherwise, I say we receive the presentation and then vote on the action, because parts of the action are highlighted in your presentation.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, please go ahead.
So just a quick timeline summary, March 12th, the governor issued a state of emergency, followed up by the Napa County Health Officer. March 16th was my declaration, March 20th was your ratification, and the health officer extended her declaration through April 30th. On the second, extension of April 2nd, she reinforced greater social distancing, limited gatherings, that's really what we'll call mitigation measures, and we'll get into that in a second. So case by case, as of this morning, as reported by the county of Napa, there are over 2 million cases worldwide, over 24,000 cases in California, 38 cases in Napa, one case in Calistoga. In California, there are, as of this morning, 732 deaths, two deaths in Napa County, and zero deaths in Calistoga. Since the beginning of the crisis, 731 tests have been conducted in Napa County, 565 of those are negative, 128 are pending, and 64 individuals are being monitored due to having close contact with a confirmed case. So it just kind of shows the order of magnitude, both worldwide and then here locally in the community. It's pretty remarkable how we only have one case, to be honest with you.
And for the information of the folks here and the people at home, this information is updated on the county's COVID-19 website every day at 10:30 AM.
Thank you. So the next thing I'm going to get into are two presentations that the health director gave to the board of supervisors. The first one was on April 7th, and the second one was this morning. In a nutshell, the purpose, the primary purpose of her order, shelter in place and social distancing, is what we're calling a mitigation measure. The more aggressive the mitigation measures, the longer and flatter the curve. I'm sure you've all heard about the curve, so it's the surge curve, and I'll show a slide of that in a few minutes. As part of the surge curve, the county has to be very diligent in making sure that that surge doesn't overwhelm the capacity of the local hospitals. Locally, there are 354 beds that are available for surge capacity. Of that, only 32 are for intensive care, and there are 39 ventilators at their disposal. Managing the curve provides relief to the healthcare workers and the healthcare system so that it doesn't get overwhelmed. It allows resources to be deployed where needed, and for personal protection equipment such as gowns, masks, and gloves to be restocked timely. It also provides resupply of testing kits, research on improved treatments, and for healthcare providers to recover if they come down with COVID. So this curve right here shows both the daily cumulative and new cases in Napa County through April 10th. So the blue curve is the summation of everyday activity, the brown or the tan curve are the number of new cases for those individual days. And you can see that it's kind of up and down, up and down, but since about the 7th, it's been relatively flat. All of that demonstrates that the mitigation measures, the sheltering in place, the social distancing, are doing what they're supposed to do. If we saw the curve continuing to go up, the tan curve, then we would expect that there's some problems going on, we're having doubling of new cases occurring on a more frequent basis, and that kind of a condition would then overwhelm the healthcare system. So these are the curves that I was talking about. These are based on a model out of the University of Pennsylvania, with an expectation of every seven days, the number of new cases is going to double. So if there's no mitigation measures, you can see how quickly that curve goes up and almost immediately overwhelms the healthcare system. With some mitigation measures, 30% mitigation measure, reducing social contact, the surge is dramatically reduced, it's still there, but it moves further out in the timeline. With more aggressive mitigation measures, there really isn't a curve, it's just a onesy twosy new case, you know, every day, but nothing that significantly will overwhelm the healthcare system. If you recall, if you, about a week ago, the governor made an announcement that he was lending ventilators to New York, and this is exactly why he did that. The measures that were put in place in California have prevented the significant surge that we're seeing back east, making our resources available to the rest of the country where they're absolutely needed. Doesn't mean that we won't need them, it just means we don't need them right now. This is just another example from the health director's presentation this morning on what happens if we don't take aggressive mitigation measures. The white line is, you know, off the chart, no mitigation measure at all. The light blue line below is with intervention, and the dash line below it is pretty much kind of what we're seeing in California right now. So again, it's just another way to demonstrate that doing nothing is not acceptable, doing what we're doing is working. A new thing that came out today, both from the health director and from the governor, is they're starting to look at what is it going to take to put California back into business. So in the health director's word, she's calling it relaxing social distancing order, or pulling back on the mitigation measures. They have not fully developed what those criteria are going to be. She is in constant communication with CDC and the other health directors in the North Bay Area. What they are suggesting, or at least looking at, if there are no new hospitalizations for 14 days, they will start to think about pulling back on some of the restrictions. Doesn't mean that there aren't any new cases, it just means that the cases aren't severe enough which require hospitalization. It's a pretty tough row to hoe, given everything that's going on, but they're trying to, you know, create some bright lines that will allow them to say, we're kind of past the crisis, we're in a manageable mode right now. They want to be able to increase the availability of testing, want to be able to isolate and identify 100% of the cases, even if that may mean no isolation at home, and they want to know where they're at and monitor them. Quarantine contacts, sufficient PPEs. So right now, one of their concerns is, and our concern is, that it's very challenging to get masks, gowns, and gloves. They're just a huge, it's a supply and demand curve. There isn't enough supply to meet the demand. So they want to be able to have those pieces of equipment in their, you know, toolbox to be ready in case there is an uptick, and then they want to be able to have sufficient capacity in their healthcare system. Some of the goals that they're now considering is allowing some natural infection to occur so that immunity can build. Old adage is herd immunity, but it needs to be done in a controlled fashion so that it doesn't overwhelm the system all over again. Protect the high-risk population, so that continues to be the seniors and those with healthy issues, and then hopefully this will be able to restart the economic engine of So some of the things that we've done locally, each department gave me a laundry list of things that they've been doing. Most of the laundry lists are too big to fit on these pages, so I tried to synthesize it and capture some of the most important ones. So for the fire department, one of the big takeaways for the latter part of March and the first part of April is that they saw a significant decrease in the number of calls that they were responding to. That's primarily due to the fact that there's less accidents on the road because there's less people out there driving, there's less people out hiking, getting into trouble, so significant downtick in what they're responding to. However, on the backside of that, the number of phone calls that they're receiving is off the charts. So the more people that are home, the more questions, the more time they have to ask questions, and so they're reaching out to the fire department, and they're able to handle those calls. Three times a week, the fire chief, myself, and the police chief meet and do, through a Zoom meeting, it's what we call the Napa County Office of Emergency Center Cooperative briefing, where we discuss daily, we discuss what happened the day before and the day that we're currently meeting, are there any questions or unmet needs that we may have to address those. Steve and I meet regularly with the department heads to stay on top of things that are changing. He has developed a response guideline and training for putting on and taking off their personal protection equipment, so it's above and beyond what they're using for fire protection services. It's masks, gloves, face shields, and special gowns that they can put on if they know that they're going into a situation where there may be a COVID-positive patient. They have developed procedures for PPE for the department and city personnel, and Steve has shared those. Due to lack of certain supplies, i.e. hand sanitizer, they have created a way to make their own, using a standard formula of denatured alcohol and aloe vera. It's about 2/3 denatured alcohol to 1/3 aloe vera. It's very effective. And lastly, they've canceled all public CPR and first aid classes out of respect for social distancing requirements and to avoid cross-contamination. The police department, again, he attends the three weekly meetings, he's ongoing meetings with myself and department directors. He has developed a continuity plan to mitigate and risk the exposure and infection to all of his staff. We're using that as a template for the other departments. It's basically, if one goes down, how do we backfill within the department? So it's, we'll call it a succession planning, but it's a COVID got-sick planning. He continues to procure a PPE for his department personnel. He's equipped all of the patrol vehicles with exposure kits, which consist of masks, gloves, and a full-on Tyvek suit in the event that they also have to go to a medical emergency where there may be a COVID-positive patient. He has rotated his staffing to ensure the greatest flexibility, so that, he's already doing split shifts, but he's doing rotation within the shifts so that there is less risk to cross-pollinate if one individual is sick throughout the whole department, and that's kind of a standard procedure for most departments. He has also increased business checks and traffic stops by 40% for the month of March as compared to February, and patrol checks by 245%. Some of that is due to the fact that he's got officers that are now able to go solo, they've gone through the field training program, and now they're out on their own. So instead of having two officers in one vehicle, we have two officers in two vehicles, and that gives them a greater ability to be out and about. The planning department has developed staggered work schedules, implemented work-from-home procedures, and Zach was very helpful in putting out new signage in front of city hall saying that we're open for business. Our doors are shut, but we'll still talk to you via phone, email, and you can submit stuff electronically. Ongoing meetings with myself and department heads, again, ramped up online permitting capabilities for handling permits. Let's see, building up, building applications they've worked with, development and construction projects to implement the protocols that the health director is requiring as far as social distancing protocols. So at any active construction site, and there are many that are allowed to be active because they're deemed essential, each job site has to have a poster board that says, this is how we're operating here. In some instances, they're taking temperatures of the employees as they're coming in, it's just a daily reminder of social separation, and social distancing is important. They are looking at conducting planning commission meetings, using teleconferencing procedures, kept the city's website updated with new development activities and how they can continue to provide the services, and then he continually is researching new policies and procedures from other agencies for implementation to improve our service Public Works Department has, again, developed staggered work schedules, implemented work-from-home where appropriate, a split shift in staff to, again, ensure social health and safety to the employees, and having redundancy in the event that one group gets ill. Ongoing meetings with myself and the directors, of course. One of the things that they implemented a couple of weeks ago, typically, we don't start our sidewalk washing program until May, we felt that it was important to move that up sooner rather than later. They're disinfecting high-profile areas, high-traffic areas with 5% chlorine, which is an effective disinfectant, and so we're washing down in front of the post office, in front of the bank, ATM machines, where people are getting take-and-go food, and also the CalMart entry We've posted social distancing requirements at all of our parks, we've closed the Little League restroom and the Logby Park restroom, and we've increased the cleaning for the fire station, the community center, and Pioneer Park to daily as a preventive measure. We've closed all of the playground equipments where kids could play, they're physically locked out at Logby, and we've put caution tape around Heather Oaks Park, and we've removed the basketball hoops from Monhoff, locked off the tennis courts and the racquetball courts. And all of that is to, again, prevent social congregation and also sharing of equipment, which could be a vector for COVID. And then they've made adjustments to the janitorial contract services for better quality control and improved cleaning, primarily at the police station where there's a lot of foot traffic. They've also implemented a cleaning of the office spaces, tools, and trucks on a daily basis. I should go back to the police department, one of the things that Mitch implemented was a disinfection protocol for beginning of every shift and ending of every shift. So each officer, patrol officer, when they enter the vehicle, they wipe it down, and when they exit the vehicle at the end of their shift, they wipe it down as well. And Steve is doing the same thing with his equipment and his vehicles. Parks and Rec efforts, this is too small for me to read, so I'm going to have to look So they've implemented work-from-home, similar to others, working with part-time staff to provide resources regarding unemployment. With our Parks Department, we significantly rely on part-time help, and they're no longer employed right now, so it's important that we try and take care of them, provide them access to the resources so they can get financial assistance. We posted bilingual signage multiple times at Parks, again, saying no playing on the equipment, no congregating for physical sports, soccer, basketball, softball, and we've closed a community pool. Usually, we have an early start with the high school, that just almost got started, and then we pulled the plug. Technically, the pool for the spring session should have opened yesterday, but it did not. One of the things that Rachel has, I think, done an excellent job on is working with some of the local health clubs to create at-home video exercising. She just posted a couple of new ones this morning, one that I thought was pretty cool was, what do you call it, kid safari or safari? Safari Kids Yoga. So the teacher starts out being a tree, and then pretty soon, you know, she's like, let's go see what kind of animals we can find, and then she's a giraffe, and, you know, it's pretty funny, and I think the kids are going to enjoy it. Social media campaign at hashtag recreation remedy, daily posts delivered to social media channels for activity crafts or outdoor social distance appropriate exercising, utilizing Calistoga Fit for kid fit, the Safari Yoga Zoom and Zumba, and then coordinating with Ryanda House for activity videos for the seniors. We're also working with local healthcare organizations for drive-throughs, resource supply delivery. Last Friday, working with the Adventist Health and some of the volunteer organizations, they did a drive-through hand sanitizer, mask, and glove distribution. How many people did you have show up, Rachel? So 50. And then on Friday, the 24th, as an extension of reaching out to the senior community, we're going to be working with the Ryanda House to do a drive-through lunch and learn. Oh, Ryanda House. So typically on Friday, they do a lunch and learn where the seniors can come, get some lunch, and then they'll do a learning exercise. Since they're not able to do that, we're letting them come to the program, and we'll give them a box lunch and a little activity sheet that they can take home and do some fun things. And then the other thing that Rachel is doing is participating in weekly co-ed, childcare community, telecommuting meetings for best practices on childcare recommendations and Gloria's office, they've implemented staffing rotations for work-from-home procedures, set up key staff with remote desktop capabilities, so there's about 13 of us that now can access our computers from home. We weren't able to do so. Working with Marin IT, we found a fairly creative way to do that and still maintain protection on the servers. We can only see what's in there, we can't download anything, or we can't upload anything on our private computer, so it's a pretty strong firewall. She's reviewing the fiscal impacts from COVID-19, including TOT and sales tax reductions. We've implemented the council direction to suspend the utility bill, late payments, and deferral of TOT for February and March. She's developing various budget scenarios for next year, taking into consideration a lot of these uncertainties. taking into consideration a lot of these uncertainties. We've began a dialogue with the city's labor negotiator for potential meet and confer, which is something that we necessarily have to do before there are any employee concessions. We've implemented an internal hiring freeze for all non-public safety positions. There are seven full-time vacant positions and one part-time vacant position that we're currently holding. And then she's eliminated all nonessential spending.
Hey, Mike, can you, you skipped our coordination with all the other cities, towns, federal government, and state government?
So this is what the administration and the mayor are doing.
I'm not bringing it up because it's what you and I are doing. It's just to demonstrate to the public we are, on a regular basis, engaged with county, state, and federal authorities.
Right, so this is kind of the behind-the-curtain activities. You really don't see this out in the public like you do with the fire department and the things that they're doing, or the closure of the parks. About two weeks ago, Chris and I started meeting with all the other mayors and city managers, the CEO of the county and the, and the Board of, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. That was a weekly meeting. For, how long did we go? For about seven times or so, and it kind of...
It was daily until...
Daily, every week, Monday through Friday, for like eight, so Monday through Friday, and then Monday through Wednesday, we were meeting daily. We got to a point where we were up to speed, all of the important discussions that needed to take place with regard to what are we gonna do about enforcement of people not practicing social distancing? How are we gonna manage that? That's been scaled back to three times a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So it's kind of on the same schedule as the cooperative meeting. The co-op meeting starts at 10:00 and usually gets over at 11:00. Then I hop on the phone at 11:30, and that typically goes till 12:15 or 12:30. But tho- those discussions are very good because not only do we have the local elected and city manager and CEO there, but there are also representatives from Congressman Thompson's office and Assemblywoman Curry's office. So we're getting information from a lot of different perspectives on what's happening at the federal and state level as well as what's happening at the local level. I mentioned that the two chiefs and I participate in the three times-a-week meeting. We closed all of, all city buildings to the public. The only public area that is currently open is the lobby at the police station. All other buildings are closed, but we're still doing business. Not as usual, but we're, we're making it work. City clerk and the fire department participate in daily PIO briefings. So what that is, again, it's, it's another avenue for the cities and the county to all be on the same page with respect to messaging and, and keeping everybody's websites current. That meeting typically is at 2:00 and lasts anywhere from 30 to 45 minutes. It started out with Jaime and Kendall participating in the same meeting. After a while, they found, figured out that they were duplicating effort. So Jaime spun off and is now kind of the PIO for the emergency services component of it. And Kendall is the administrative PIO. But they're both working closely together to make sure that any messaging that goes out is consistent and uniform, both across the agencies but also within our community. We have been posting Nixls as necessary and making sure that our city website is up to date with current information and available resources. And we're working closely with the chamber, as closely as we can, to make sure that any information that we get related to small business assistance for financial, financial help, that they're getting that information timely and, and quickly. We're also reaching out to Up Valley Center when we see something that may be of benefit to their clients that they may not be aware of. So we're pushing that out as, as quickly as I get it. And then at City Hall, we're, we've rotate, we're rotating staff on an as needed basis.
On the call with all of the, the mayors, city managers, and staff, there's a lot of sharing of common concerns, common challenges, as well as uncommon challenges that an individual community is experiencing. And it's allowing the opportunity for a sharing of best practices and how we achieve this, or how we conquer some of the challenges we have. In addition to current state, we're already talking about in these meetings, what does the future state look like? Both financially, staffing-wise, how we open businesses again, et cetera. While this is a very fluid situation, it is definitely not a case we're only looking at today. We're already looking weeks, if not months, ahead and sharing some of those practices. We are a county that unfortunately has experienced several challenges over the last five years, disasters, if you will, from wildfires to PSPS to evacuations to earthquakes even, floods. So we, the benefit coming out of that is we are very well-aligned as a county, a county of six individual entities in concert on this. So we are sharing our resources amongst each other as well. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. So, two more slides, but we'll get... So one of the things that Gloria and I have been looking at, you know, primarily since we are a tourism-driven economy, what impact will this have on our TOT? Looking at the projected revenues from March through August with the assumption that there is no TOT coming in. It doesn't mean that there won't be any, but I'm kind of taking, you know, the most conservative approach. There is estimated to be about a $3.6 million loss in revenue through August from the TOT. We're also looking at something in the range of about a half a million dollars in sales tax loss through August. And as I mentioned earlier on the, with the fire department, because their calls are down, there's not as much activity in the county who we have a contract with for emergency services. So if they were all outside the city limits, we send the county a bill. But we're not seeing that level of response. So Steve is suggesting that, you know, through at least August, there's gonna be about a $90,000 reduction in what he classically or historically would, would be able to get for contract revenue. These are just the big, you know, the big-picture items. It's, didn't want to get into the gas tax and all that. The gas stations are still open. They're still, you know, doing business. But these are probably the three biggest things that, that your council needs to be cognizant of.
All right, thank you.
So then the last one is, you know, our biggest expense is our personnel. So I would like to suggest that if not on the 21st, the 5th, we convene a closed session. I've already reached out to the city attorney's office, and they're coordinating with our labor negotiator as we speak as to a laundry list of things that we would be bringing to your council under that meeting. So this is just kind of a heads-up that, that we'll be working towards that. And as we talk about the goal-setting budget or the, the budget meetings, we'll talk about time of meeting and then whether you want the closed sessions to be before or after. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mike, very much. Council members, questions for staff? All right, couple of highlights I'd like to hit in there. In terms of, well, first, thank you to all staff from department, department heads through line staff for doing a remarkable job under the circumstances. We are, as Mike has said multiple times, we are open for business. We're just doing business in a different fashion, serving our residents in terms of their needs. So thank you, and take that back, department heads to your teams for that. We appreciate it. Park and Recreation, you guys are, and I'm getting a lot of great feedback. You're doing a great job to encourage people and give them resources to get some exercise, whether it's indoors or outdoors. I'm seeing a lot of people out walking, which is great, riding their bikes, keeping their distance. We have, and Mike will tell you, we have been asked to pay attention particularly to Oak Hill Mine Trail. It is an asset for us, as well as asset for the county. I appreciate the fact that both on our bike path, at the end of Washington Street and at Oak Hill Mine Trail, there are signs up telling people what the right procedures are, both in English and Spanish. Over the weekend, the sign-up at Oak Hill Mine Trail was down. So when I rode by on my bike, I picked it up and tried to tape it back together. So if you can have somebody take a look, and we probably have to reprint those and get a more stable structure there. But that's, I am hearing that people are respecting distance, stepping aside. What we have to be very careful about is while we want physical distance, we need people to have physical activity if they're capable. And we also need social interaction, which is why the language from governor all the way through to local municipalities has changed from social distancing to physical distancing with social interaction. That is very important to the, the mental health and well-being of folks. Call your neighbors, shout over the fence, email, text, check up on people that you normally may not have because you would have bumped into them somewhere. Also want to call out CalMart. Bill Shaw and his team have done an excellent job of adapting to very changing circumstances, almost in the beginning on a daily basis, what the CDC and what the county and what the state required they do. I appreciate and understand, I'll say, I understand, I don't appreciate, that we have had a few situations in that store in particular with some disgruntled residents. I understand their stress. But the last people you need to take that stress out on are the people at the grocery store, at the restaurants, at the hardware store, at the post office that are doing incredible work so that we can go about our daily business as, as we can. If you do not feel, and I'll be very clear about this, if you do not feel that CalMart or the post office is doing enough, then stay out of there. You have other options to get your food. You have other options to put posts in the mail. Do not create a situation. Be kind to one another, be accommodating. We are all in this together. Fortunately, as I mentioned, those incidents have been few, but unfortunately, it's unnerving to the folks who work there. So I have been down Valley and seen other stores operating, other grocery stores, which I won't mention. And CalMart is head and shoulders above in their practices to try their best to keep us safe. So let's keep all of that in mind. But again, be outside. With the being outside, and because people are trying to pass as they're walking, walking their dogs, hiking, et cetera, there are more people in the roadways. So at home, for those of you in this room and those of you on TV watching, slow down. There is a lot more activity on our streets and sidewalks and at crossings, so please, please pay attention to that. All right, anyone in the public with any questions regarding this matter? Yes?
I, I do want to give a shout-out also to a lot of the nonprofit organizations that are doing a Yomn's effort behind the scene as well. So Up Valley Center, COAD, ABOD, all of those...
Food Pantry?
Food Pantry, all of those groups that are providing, you know, much-needed financial and, and food support. Takes a ton of pressure off of the jurisdictions to allow us to focus on the critical things that we need to move forward. And then I think that Kendall has one public comment that we'd like to read into the record regarding this item.
Sure.
I actually have two. I received one more email just a few minutes ago. The first email, received April 14th at 2:24 PM. You have this one on your dais, from Jenny Norris. It reads, "Sonoma County announced yesterday in a Nixel alert that it's strongly stepping up COVID-19 precautions. Face coverings will be mandatory starting this Friday, April 17th, in all buildings, plus outdoors if you can't guarantee six-foot distancing, punishable as a misdemeanor. According to the alert, it is now believed that the virus stays viable in the air up to three hours and can be passed by talking, not only sneezes and coughs. And up to half the people with COVID-19 have been infected by someone who is asymptomatic. The odds are good that some of us here are infected and asymptomatic as well. If all it takes is an asymptomatic person talking in an area that someone else will pass through within three hours, then most of the essential businesses, staff, and many of the customers are being exposed, and we need to take this more seriously. Outdoor recreation is another problem. The Oak Hill Mine Trail, for example, is crowded now, especially since the gyms have closed. Very few wear masks, and people often pass one another within just a few feet. The same holds true for popular walking routes along Grant Street and Chateau Springs Loop. Most store employees and many customers and recreational walkers don't wear masks. Plastic shields indoors and six-foot distancing may help, but may not be adequate, given this new information. I appreciate that Sonoma County is taking precautionary steps to protect their residents by recognizing that even with the best intentions, many of us may be exposing ourselves or others without knowing it. This is relevant to Calistoga. We can do better. The Nixel alert can be found here, and the emailer provided the link to the Nixel. Signed, Jenny Norris."
Thank you. Some of those topics we have addressed during this meeting. While in Sonoma County, as of late yesterday, they have chosen to go to the mask concept. We are working in, under the direction of the Napa County Health Officer and the Napa County, Napa County Department of Public Health. Best practice recommendations from the CDC on down, not mandatory at this point in this county, but best recommendations are wear a face covering when going out in public. But it is not a requirement at this point, but if that is what makes you feel more most comfortable, please do so. Regarding, we addressed the Oak Hill Mine Trail. Thank you. And then you have a second?
One more comment. This was just received at 3:01 PM today from Lana Richardson. It reads, "City officials, mayor, and council, as the shelter-in-place order continues, it is discouraging to see many citizens and workers at essential businesses still in public without face coverings. To regain some level of normalcy in our lives as soon as possible, it is important to follow social distancing rules and other measures as suggested by CDC to protect our community and slow the spread of COVID-19. I applaud our local businesses for the practices that have been implemented, sanitizing of surfaces, markings for social distancing, et cetera. However, I think it is important to require face coverings when in public places such as stores, pharmacies, restaurant order pickup, farmer's market, and any time you cannot maintain six-foot separation. Sonoma County has recently issued such an order. I request that Calistoga city officials suggest the same for Napa County. This should apply to all citizens and especially workers in essential businesses that are open and in any capacity serving the public, i.e. grocery stores, hardware stores, pharmacy, restaurant, gas station cashiers. Here is some verbiage from the Sonoma County order. All persons shall wear facial coverings before they enter any indoor facility besides their residence, any enclosed space, or while outdoors when the person is unable to maintain a six-foot distance from another person at all times. Please share these concerns with the Napa County officials and supervisors. Until such action is mandated at a minimum, I hope you will recommend that the public do so voluntarily and set an example by doing so yourselves. Signed, Lana Richardson."
Thank you very much. Similar comment on that. And in tomorrow's county-wide meeting teleconference, the city manager, myself, will address that, those raised concerns as well when we have the public health officer on the line. Anyone else wishing to make public comment?
So could you let us know what the Napa County Public Health Officer, what, how they respond to these kind of comments? I understand there's not unanimity about the face mask wearing, but let us know what their take is on it now that the neighboring county is taking that step as well.
And their, their recommendations, which are on the county website, COVID-19 county website, do recommend, but do not mandate the use of that. But we'll, I'll share that comment back.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that said, we will entertain a motion on the continuation, and thank you for your report, Mike, on the continuation of the emergency proclamation and local emergency order related to COVID-19, and entertain a motion as presented.
I move to continue it.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams. We have a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next regular agenda, item number six, consideration of a resolution approving emergency funding request from Up Valley Family Center and approving a budget adjustment in the amount of $200,000. Recommended action is to adopt the resolution. Taking us through this will be City Manager Kern, Mike.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers, Mike Kern, City Manager. On March 25th, I received a request from Up Valley Center for emergency funding to provide up to 68, I'll call them scholarships or beneficial grants to 68 families in the amount of up to $2,500. That assistance that they're requesting equates to $170,000. They're also asking for an additional $30,000 to provide administrative support and documentation as to how those funds are distributed. According to their request, this would serve those members of our community that are the most underserved and least able to get through this, primarily low-income and Spanish-speaking residents. They have, in the past, Up Valley Center has done a tremendous job for the community in multiple facets, providing immigration services, legal services to seniors, and also assisting with family support through their care programs. The source of the funds, if your council decides that this is something that you want to approve, would come from general fund reserves. We have approximately 6.9 million in reserves right now. As I mentioned in the previous discussion, we are anticipating approximately four-plus million dollars in undrived revenue as the result of COVID-19. Without any significant budget reductions, the reserve will end up somewhere in the range of just under $2 million by August. And so just kind of puts it in an order of magnitude. My recommendation is that, you know, these are some of the least capable people of, you know, providing for themselves. There are other resources certainly that they could avail themselves to, but it's their request, and so I'm bringing it forward for your council consideration. I'm here for any questions you may have.
And perhaps not less, least capable, at least eligible for some of the other programming out there.
It's an underserved population for lots of reasons.
Understood. And my understanding is that this request is being made to us as the funder of Last Resort, as they have tapped into and received, have been, Up Valley Family Center has benefited from a relatively significant grant from the Napa Community-
Foundation.
Community Foundation, thank you very much. And that these funds would be used for families who are, they're tapped out their eligibility or are not eligible for other programs that are available, soon to be available from the federal and the state.
And it would annuer only to Calistoga residents, within our corporate limits.
Got it. Thank you. Councilmembers, questions?
I'm going to be supportive of this, of this measure. You know, this economic blow to so many of us came fast and came hard, and not everyone was prepared for it, so this is a fairly rapid response, I think, to an immediate need. And what's good about it, in a sense, is that it's an immediate injection of cash into this local economy. Not only does it help those people who are in need immediately, but it'll spread it around here in town, so that also is helpful. I talked to the family center also looking into this, and the letter was not quite clear. It looks to me as well that there were 68 chosen households that were going to be served by this, but $2,500 would be the maximum award, is what she clarified to me, and so there may be more than 68 households affected, is how I understood it, depending on the, and they can't, the people can't just walk into family center and say, you know, we'd like some money, please. They're vetted with, by various means, income verification or lack of it, unemployment verification, tax returns, or some kind of affidavit that indicates that their need is real and that they're local. But I understood that it may be more than 68 if each award is less than, or some of them may not be as much as $2,500. So I'm also aware, as I am supportive, I'm also aware that the city can't do this every day. You know, we can't go on and on spending that kind of money, but for the short term, I think it's the right thing. In the longer term, you know, we may be looking at a new paradigm, but at least this will give these people some breathing room to adjust to what could be a new normal. So I would be supportive of this.
Thank you. Other councilmembers?
I can see the need. I agree that we need to make sure that, one of the things the city is supposed to do is to protect our people. So from that perspective, I see that this is being important. The other thing I want to mention is, is that $200,000 is probably two full-time jobs in this city, when you take into account wages and fringe benefits. So you are potentially impacting the workforce of the city more than it would be otherwise by approving this. At the same time, I appreciate the need that's out there, but, and I support this with the full knowledge that come next budget, there's going to be some cutbacks, and some of those cutbacks might even be in the contribution we make to the family center.
Anyone else? Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Yes, I just want to say that I support this. I had the opportunity to talk to Jenny O'Connor and get more knowledge about this issue. I want to support this mostly because it affects families that they are, as you mentioned, they are not able to apply for federal aid. And these families are the ones, they have their kids in our community, these families are the ones that are support our local businesses, all their restaurants, resorts and stuff, so we need to support them right now when they need us, because there is no way that these families can go back to their countries, because, you know, it's even worse there. So we need to support them, we need to keep our workforce here, and this is the right way to do it.
Right. I support the action. In addition to families, people living alone, seniors, who will be eligible for this, and there are some programs that they may not be eligible for elsewhere. This is a significant amount of money for a community of our size. I agree very much so with Councilmember Williams, that it's immediate need that should be granted. I'm supportive of it. I would be less supportive if it weren't for the fact that year after year, situation after situation, the Up Valley Family Center has demonstrated both logistical and fiduciary responsibility second.